Councilor Hart, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
Welcome to tonight's study session for September 15th, 2025. Tonight is a study session for our budget, but before we start with that, any council reports? Counselor Zadi?
Counselor Yelich?
Counselor Ireland?
I'd like to read a statement. I'm a communications specialist for my church. This is what our leadership put out this week after what's transpired in the last week. I tell you, after the city council meeting and everything else that went on last week, it's even hard to come tonight, I'll tell you the truth. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints condemns horrific acts of violence worldwide, including the recent assassination in Utah. We affirm our repeated calls to seek peace and unity despite our differences. Jesus Christ teaches us to love one another, and hate is wrong, and that the human life is sacred. We are all to reject violence and instead build understanding. Recognizing that we are all children of God, we must treat one another with more dignity, compassion, respect. As we mourn with those who have experienced loss and care for those living in fear or conflict, we call upon people everywhere to build communities of great kindness and love. And I want to thank all of you for respecting me, no matter if you agree with me or not. In every meeting, I feel respected, and I want to tell you I'm grateful for each of you for doing that. Thank you very much. And this week, I attended St. Anthony's North Mayor's study. It's called St. Anthony's North Health Service Area, and they do a study of the area. And what most impacted me, that I learned that a third of the residents in the area feel food insecurity, which is not good. Twenty-two percent of residents in the area feel like they live in poor living conditions compared to 10% in homes. And what was really shocking is 26% of deaths per 100,000 are alcohol-related. And Colorado almost leads the nation in alcohol-related deaths. Compared to the United States, we're at 28%. In the United States, it's 15.2%. So I would call on us to do a better job in events that we plan, not to promote so much alcohol. We're at a low since 1939 for alcohol use in our country. Only 54% adults now use alcohol. So I think we could be a leader in that, instead of our state is out of whack with the rest of the nation. So that's one thing on the budget that I propose that we do, is the events don't involve alcohol, and they're more family-related. I also went to, our church had a, just as necessary, a new nonprofit. They provide hygiene kits for high schools, for kids who don't have hygiene products, and for food banks, and for us, they did it for first responders. There was a good turnout. I think we did over a few thousand kits, so it was great. I also attended the Historical Society Trailblazers of Westminster, celebrating our founding women. And I was so glad to see Linda Grable there, because she had a heart attack a month ago while she was at our meeting. So she was there being the narrator, and it was great to see her. And she always has so much enthusiasm for the history of our cities. So it makes me enthusiastic, too, just hearing her. And so I was appreciative to go to that. And that's all I have for now, thank you.
Counselor Demont?
One thing I attended last week is the Ralston House Beers and Brats fundraiser. So if you don't know what Ralston House does, I'd recommend you look them up. A good partner of ours that takes care of people who go through horrific things. So really important to support organizations like that. That's all I got.
Nothing for me, but I just want to thank Counselor Ireland for the words that you spoke. I think we all share that desire to not have violence enter into our lives and not promote it. And so thank you for sharing that. And I also would love to have some non-alcoholic options at our events, like mocktails, or even at the brew fest, to have non-alcoholic beers available. Because I'm not a big drinker, and so I would love that. So thanks for that idea.
Sometimes I can't even get water as a non-drinker, because you have to have different things. So it is always interesting. Um, Counselor Hart?
Nothing for me this week, thanks.
We hope you're feeling better soon.
Thank you.
And how come are we just hearing her out there? Just one second, we're hearing you via the boardroom. So, well, we can hear you, but we need you inside here. But now I lost my thought of what I was even going to say. So anyway, we're glad you're here, and I thank you for your kindness of trying to keep me healthy. With that, I can sit here and tell you, at least until November 4th, I will not doing a 2:00 AM meeting ever again. I left here, got home at 3:00 AM last week, got up at 5:00, was in the car by 6:00, and was at the Sarah Cannon by 7:00. Spent four hours getting fluids, and you all, all my prayer warriors listening, you overdid yourselves, because I hit a 156, so everything was a go. All of my forms had to go to the trial people, and they had to accept me in. So that was an unknown that you sat there for another hour waiting for. So at noon, I was, it was all go. So from noon to 1:00, I had my first chemo. Then they had to watch me for four hours, so we left there at 5:00 PM. I got home at 6:00 PM. And yes, I had historical society meetings, so I did go. Yes, I shouldn't have gone, but I went. Anyway, they are getting ready for their October Tea that they always have. They're having it at the MAC this year at 2:00, 2:00 to 4:00. It's always a great time, and so tickets are available. And Hometown Tree Lighting is December 5th, and that's always a great time, so we worked on that. Gaffers were Wednesday night. They are getting ready to all do high school voter registration within their schools now through May. And they have a target of how many each of them want to do. And the Adams County Clerk and Recorder, and one of his people came and shared with them for over an hour, asked or answered all their questions. We're just wonderful with them, gave all the information and how to be back in contact with them. So they're getting ready to go, and they're very excited. Attended the nonprofit on, I think it was Thursday? And yeah, alcohol, mental health, and suicide stuck out, like, and we're over the charts. Colorado does not do well, is not doing well, are not healthy. Everything that you mentioned, Counselor Ireland, just, I mean, I got, my hand got tired taking notes, because it was, it's a lot. And there are a lot of nonprofits there that help in lots of different areas. But it's a meeting that I've been to before, where then you make those connections, because these folks might be working on food, and these folks might be doing this and this. And so it's just good to go around the room and hear, so you know afterwards who to make connections with. And so I thank St. Anthony's for all of that. They did a great job. Jody and I and others met with, other staff met with Kaiser Permanente people about their project, and they're just so excited to share with us about being in Westminster and what they have planned. Saturday, Debbie Teeter always puts her national night out on a weekend, because that's when the neighbors can get together. Great crowd, she always has the, I don't know what we call them, event team officers there. And they were there, and then she had invited any officers that were on duty to come by. And some were teased, because somebody had fed them earlier in their shift, and they ate, I think Jimmy John's, they said. But they were eating plenty here, too, so they must have two wooden legs to fill up. And so we had good laughs. But they always have great questions. We have some of the concerns about boarding houses being made from homes. And so she gave me an email tonight for you folks to look at. We had that situation in my neighborhood this week, where last weekend, somebody came to my door down the street and said, "Mayor, we don't know what to do. Is this legal?" And so I took down all the information, got it to Jody, and no, it's not legal to turn a single-use home into an eight-place apartment, when it's all going to be apartments. They were going to pave the front yard and make people pay for special permits for parking in that lot, plus the two in the driveway. Because the neighbors had told them, "You can't charge on the street, that's public," right away. They knew that. So anyway, that got a cease and desist. Thank you for all that help, and we understand there could be two more in our neighborhood. So all's I say to community is, don't assume everything's okay. Ask questions, ask a lot of questions, and let the city folks know what's happening in your neighborhood, and they will check it out. Because the cease and desist order on the house in my neighborhood went down, and that's a felony. So then it went back up. So I applaud citizens for bringing stuff to us, and I applaud you and your teams for checking into it and finding out when things are wrong, they're wrong, and shutting them down. Okay, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report tonight, and thank you also for that comment. We don't know what we don't know, so we really do oftentimes rely on the community to let us know. We'll come out and have a look, and sometimes everything is fine and compliant, and there's permits in place. Other times, there's not, and then that's when the city steps in. Okay, first, the next slide, please. All right, by way of update, this was a big one for the city. We had a large water main break on 112th Avenue last week. Our Public Works and Utilities crews worked through that night to repair. It was a 24-inch main, so that's one of our bigger ones. And that was right in front, almost right in front of the Front Range Community College. So that had a big neighborhood impact, and we appreciate the patience of that neighborhood. The repair required the closing of three out of four of those lanes on 112th. And I would like to give a shout-out to the crew that worked that break. That was Brandon Santangelo, Tyler Rope, and Nick Craig, and their crews who worked throughout that night. The same time, North Clan had another large water main break, and we assisted on that main break as well. So our crews are very, very tired, but they got that street button back up as quickly as they could. So that was a, that's a shout-out to our fine folks in Public Works and Utilities. Next slide, please. This is another one for the city. The city has won a national award for our fire department video. The Communications Division earned the Savvy Award from the City-County Communications and Marketing Association for its video featuring our fire department's water rescue team. And you'll recall that that video was part of the city's engagement efforts around the paramedics and pavement ballot initiative, so that was helpful. And residents can view this video at any time. If you haven't seen it yet, you can watch that at youtube.com/westminsterco. And you can find all our material on there, but that video is definitely worth watching if you haven't seen it. Next slide, please. On, yeah, we'll talk about that. Coming up on Thursday, September 18th, we have a drinking water facility pre-construction open house. So next week is our ribbon-cutting, but this week is the opportunity for the community to come in and have a look at the final design for the drinking water facility. And so you can learn about the construction timeline, what to expect during the project, as well as related projects. There are two related projects. Many people don't realize, we're also building, as council-approved, a raw water pipeline that feeds this drinking water facility, and a finished water pipeline that takes the water and puts it into our distribution system. So the project team will be there that night, and you can ask any questions and engage with the team about the project. I should note, we distributed about 400 flyers to homes in the neighborhood, including Waverly Acres, Highland Village, Highland Meadows, West Cliff, and Trendwood. So this is a great opportunity for the neighborhood to come up to speed if they haven't been engaged in our advisory teamwork. This would be a great night to check in before the open house next week. So that is happening Thursday, this Thursday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that will be at the Mandalay Middle School, which is on Pierce Street. That's 9651 Pierce Street. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda, the focus of this evening is to review with city council the 2026 proposed budget. This is the study session in which we go through community requests and city council questions and answers. All of our department directors are here this evening, and two deputy city managers to facilitate this work tonight. And then if council is satisfied, it will move into first reading at a regular city council meeting, preparing for final adoption. We also have tonight two executive session items to consult the city attorney, first regarding the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, and then also Colorado Sunshine and Open Meetings law. Next slide, please. This week, on Tuesday, tomorrow night, September 16th, is the monthly community update with Mayor McNally and me, city manager. And this month's topic is quality of life. This is very topical. This will cover property standards, parking management, and parking enforcement, and is probably the most topical, as you all see in our emails from community. And what the mayor described tonight is another example. The quality of life is top of mind for our community, and they're really reaching out a lot to the city right now for assistance with these kinds of issues. So tomorrow night, we're going to have our team there to talk about what's entailed with helping our community through quality of life concerns in their neighborhoods, and some of the services we provide to help with that. So that's at 5:30 to 6:30, right here at city council chambers. And then, of course, on Thursday, I've already mentioned, is our drinking water pre-construction open house, and that's at 6:00 at Mandalay Middle School. Next slide, please. At our next meeting of city council, that's September 22nd, next Monday, that's a big night for us, because we do not have a regular meeting of city council on September 29th. So the 22nd is a full agenda. We will have three presentations, a presentation of employee service awards, proclamation for Constitution Week, and a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. There will be seven items on consent agenda, including one second reading that night. And then for new business, we will have two items. The first is a first reading of councilor's bill amending the 2025 budget to accept Dr. Cog's Building Performance Collaborative Grant Funds. So that's a fund award and acceptance by city council. And then the other item is a first reading of councilor's bill to regulate the use of city-owned or operator property, and amending certain section of the Westminster Municipal Code, providing for enforcement of such regulations by our Westminster Park Rangers. Next slide, please. Also, under new business, we're seeking the execution authority for Adams County Open Space Grant Agreement, and that's for our municipal court park project, as well as first reading of councilor's bill to appropriate the funds for the municipal court project. Also up that night will be a first reading of councilor's bill to establish the city of Westminster's Noxious Weed Advisory Board. And that was reviewed with city council in study session. Under old business, there are two second readings. A second reading of councilor's bill 29, and that's to approve a development agreement with Volker Development for the development of Lot 2, Block C6 in downtown Westminster. And also a second reading of councilor's bill 31, as for the proposed retirement community at Westminster Boulevard and West 104th Avenue. And the second reading of councilor bill 32, to rezone the Han Hewitt property. That's the same property to plan unit development and consideration of a preliminary development plan. Next slide, please. Finally, for that night, under old business, a second reading of bill 33, and that provides supplemental funds from the utility capital reserve to the utility water fund for that raw water pipeline that I mentioned a little earlier. Finally, under post-meeting study session, will be a presentation on housing updates and recommendations, as well as an executive session next Monday. And that will be to discuss a personnel matter, which is the annual review for the city attorney. Next slide, please. As always, please reach out to the city. There's multiple ways to do that. You could submit a ticket through Access Westminster, westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster, or through our mobile app, if you don't yet have that. Phone us, 303-658-2400, Monday through Friday. And anytime, you can reach, get information about the city from westminsterco.gov and any one of our four social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, X, or Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions? Counselor K?
Concerning the proclamations for Hispanic Heritage Month, I didn't see that one there, and I just checked. I don't think we got enough responses yet. Is the time up for that, or could we do a quick poll to see what?
At least we got enough responses, but it won't be until the October 13th meeting.
Lovely, okay, thank you.
I did have a question, but I mean, it's just the pipe that's gonna, the feeder pipe for the new water treatment facility, that's going down 104th slash Church Ranch?
The raw water pipeline?
Yeah.
The inlet pipe? Yeah, it's actually a significant routing of that pipe. I'll have more coming for city council on that. It will go right in front of three of our schools. And one of the updates that I have for council at a future meeting will be around that work with the schools. We're staging that project to not impact the school season, so we're accelerating and clumping the work by the schools to happen in the summertime. But that'll be part of it, but it isn't a linear alignment by street. And so if you would like more detail, I'll bring that back to council about the alignment of that raw water line.
Anything else? Counselor Hart, can you speak to us, so we see if you're in our room yet?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can hear you, but you're clear out in the, where we usually sit for council meetings. You're not in our board meeting yet. Okay, they'll keep working on it. Presentations.
We have one presentation this evening. I'm going to introduce it briefly, and then Erin Fariter of our Policy and Budget Group will walk through the agenda tonight. So tonight before us is the 2026 Proposed Budget. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is for city council to provide direction to staff regarding the proposed budget, which you have and which was posted publicly. And we'll talk about the agenda for tonight, and then we'll move through a presentation. And then at various stages of the evening will be opportunities for questions and answers, and then we'll conclude with city council's deliberations and direction.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name's Erin Fariter, Policy and Budget Manager. I'm joined with Chris Lindsay. I might look at you. Whenever Abby stands up, you'll. She got it right. Joined here with Chris Lindsay, our Assistant City Manager, Chief of Staff, along with the entire executive leadership team and the policy and budget team. Tonight, as Jody shared, we'll be reviewing the proposed 2026 budget together. We welcome and are seeking your insights to guide the finalization of the 2026 budget. The presentation is organized into these sections. We'll review in each one, review and discuss each one related to the 2026 budget. If you would, please write down your questions, and we'll tackle them at the end of each section. And with that, I'll turn it back to City Manager Andrews to review the foundation and framework for which the budget was established.
Thank you, Erin. I have two slides tonight on the budget presentation, and this is the first of those two slides. As worked up with city council, this is a lean budget for 2026. That acronym- That acronym stands for Lean, Efficient and Aligned to our Community's Needs. And there are five elements that our leadership team, our department directors really embraced under the lean budget approach. The first is to optimize the resources with which we've already been entrusted and in particular our staffing resources. The second is to align those resources to necessities, and I will talk a little bit about that in the second slide. In effect, what that means is instead of adding staff to address our needs, we are realigning existing staff positions. And we have been doing that since 2025 and that's continued in 2026. The third element is prioritizing essentials, and that's really understanding, and we did a lot of work on this year, understanding what our community and city council wants us to do and how we align our resources and prioritize those for getting the essentials done. The fourth is to invest those resources efficiently, so to continue to strive for continual improvement and efficient resource application. And then finally, to maximize the value of all of our efforts and really understanding who we work for and who we serve with this budget. Next slide, please. So the proposed budget before you tonight, which you have all, city council directed really since November of 2024, when we did our first debrief session from the 25 budget, is that this city is committed to doing more with the resources that we've been entrusted with. This budget does reflect the city's ongoing commitment and my commitment as city manager and all of our department directors to repurpose existing staff positions, saving that, that yield of savings in 2025 of $2.7 million from 25 repurposed positions. In addition to this budget, we're proposing savings from 30 repurposed positions. I'm sorry, I put that backwards. Thirty positions in 2025 was $3 million and 25 positions in this budget will be $2.7 million. And I want to describe what that is and what it isn't. What that is, is a repurposing of positions as a position becomes vacant. Our department directors review that position and determine collectively whether it's needed and where it is, or whether it needs to be repurposed and reallocated either to another work group or sometimes to another department to meet a need without adding additional staff. I would like to note that there are only two new staff positions in this budget. So with all of that belt tightening, $5.7 million worth, we're only seeking two new positions this year. And one of them is absolutely essential. That's in our public safety telecommunication team or our 911 team. You'll be familiar with all the call load increases that our fire department has been receiving. Those all go through the shared 911 team that is in the police department. And so we have not increased that staff team in a long time and those call loads have almost doubled. And so I'm seeking one additional position for that team. And then to get the most out of the streets that we've already been entrusted with by this community to build and operate, I'm seeking one traffic technician to help us bring our signal infrastructure up to maintenance standards and the highest performance possible that we can get out of our current system. Also in the budget is a corresponding capital allocation to do a complete review of our, of our capabilities with our, with our intersections and really take us into the next level, next generation with how we can achieve smart intersections and get better performance out of our intersection by having them communicate with each other as to when traffic is or isn't coming their way. That will include system-wide capabilities in future years for emergency responder overrides. City council has provided that as a priority in the last couple of budget cycles, but our infrastructure has not been able to deliver on that. We just don't have that infrastructure in place. So a part of this work in this budget is to get, start to get ready to do that. This approach does allow for continued investments in the maintenance and modernization of all of our assets, which is intended to enhance reliability, safety and our service delivery to the Westminster community. We're going to get into the details. We have a strong, stable budget this year is, we are seeing expenditures rising as our, as our, as our neighboring cities are around costs of goods and services. We are seeing a slight projection for increase in revenues next year, so we are not in the position of some of our neighbors. We work very closely with the Lead School of Business to help us make those revenue projections and they're very precise. They have been in past years. Those are included in this budget. So I want to impart a sense of confidence for city council that this budget does reflect actual market conditions as best that we can predict them and that we're not in the same position at all as to some of our neighboring cities who have to either get into staff layoffs, furloughs, or even staff reductions. That's not Westminster. We are very sound and I, I think that you could see in, in the repurposing approach over the past two budget cycles, that we've braced ourselves for that and prepared ourselves for this economic situation by getting more out of the positions we've already been entrusted with.
Can I just ask Amber, make sure she can hear us?
Absolutely.
Councillor Iron, or Councillor, Councillor Hart, can I just make sure you can hear people as they talk around the table?
I can hear everyone perfectly.
Okay, just speak up and interrupt us if you can't, okay?
Thank you so much.
Okay, and I think we have you in our room, so welcome.
Yay!
All right. I believe I'm going to turn it over to Erin and Erin's going to now walk us through the budget development process.
Thank you, City Manager Andrews. The next eight slides, we will, we will review the budget development process and provide an overview of the 2026 budget. The goal of the development process was and still is to work together with city council and the community to align our resources to provide high-quality core services and foster resilience in order to promote a safe and thriving community. Each budget cycle is an opportunity, opportunity, opportunity to reflect, improve and realign resources with the community's priorities. Budget developments began, as City Manager Andrews mentioned, with our debrief in November at the end of the 2025 budget process to identify successes and areas for improvement. Staff used this feedback to make adjustments in the 2026 process. As a result, staff focused on engagement, collaboration, emphasizing transparency, strategic alignment and active community participation. In these last nine months, budget topics have been included in about 50% of the city council meetings to keep those engagements and conversations going throughout the process. We appreciate your collaboration and guidance these last nine months. The 2026 budget is grounded in the city's strategic plan, anchored by its vision, mission, guiding principles and strategic priorities. During the city council's annual review, no changes were made to the mission, vision, guiding principles and strategic priorities. Several policy and operational objectives were updated. Within the six strategic priorities, there are 46 policy objectives or specific goals designed to support each of those priorities. And within those objectives, there are 176 operational objectives guiding day-to-day actions. The mid-year strategic plan progress report was shared with city council this past Monday and will be included on our website shortly. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Chris Lindsay to walk us through the next detailed slides about our budget.
Thank you, Erin. I'm pleased to go through some of the higher level numbers as we begin to deep dive onto community requests and council budget questions related to the 2026 budget. I wanted to provide a little higher level grounding. The proposed 2026 budget is balanced and comprised with all requirements set forth in the city charter, state requirements and generally accepted accounting principles. The 2026 budget for all funds, once you net out inter-fund transfers, is approximately $371 million, which represents an increase of nearly $38 million or 12% compared to the 2025 adopted budget. This is primarily due to a 45% increase in our additions to our capital program in 2026 and a 9% increase in personnel costs, mostly resulting from medical and dental insurance premium increases. The 2026 budget is comprised of multiple funds, which we're showing here, the biggest of which is the general fund, or more than half of the city's total budget, followed by the utility funds, which includes water, wastewater and storm drainage. Then our general capital, parks, open space and trails, and you can see the rest of the list there. For further detail on this in your budget book, page 31 is the overview. Beginning on page 33, there are fund tables that go through each fund. Due to the magnitude and the most, the fact that most of our operating is in the general fund, I'm going to zoom in on that for the next couple of slides here. There are many revenue sources that support the city's general fund, which is proposed at $235 million. And you see a category level view of those here in this pie chart. Sales and use taxes, as many of you are familiar with, represent almost two-thirds of the city's, of the general fund revenue stream. The other 36 and a half are smaller but many diverse revenue streams you can see there. This also includes, or the 2026 budget also includes about $18 million usage of available fund balance in the general fund, on top of $217 million in new revenue next year that totals that $235 million. I stop and emphasize this because I want to make sure it's really clear, we're putting all available resources into those capital programs and especially to our streets to support capital needs that directly impact our community. On the expenditure side, the city's general fund represents the primary operating fund of most of the city's operations. That includes the police department, the fire department, the administration, streets and facilities maintenance portion of public works and utilities, the city manager's office, the chief of staff's office, the finance department, human resources department, information technology department, community services department and the portions of the parks, rec and libraries departments. In addition to the city's general fund central charges budget, which we note here and covers citywide expenses and debt service. The general fund budget anticipates expenditures totaling $235 million, an increase of $13 million or 6% compared to our 2025 revised general fund budget. So the previous slide was broken out by department. This slide breaks it out by expenditure category across all of those departments. You'll see here, personnel is the biggest expense in the general fund and I think that, that should match the services that we provide, right? We're a people-based service provider to the community. So almost two-thirds of our general fund is personnel, followed by contractuals, and then the rest of those revenue streams that you see. The transfers expenditures includes movement of inter-funds over to the general capital improvement fund. So the capital that you see done on the general fund side is moved from sales tax dollars collected in the general fund and over to the general capital improvement fund. It also includes transfers to the parking management fund, property liability self-insurance fund and the workers' compensation self-insurance fund. With that, I'm going to move back over to Erin, who's going to talk to you about our capital program.
Thank you, Chris. Having reviewed our revenues and our operating expenses, let's shift our attention to the capital improvement program. The 2026 budget, budget proposes an achievable and financially responsible capital plan. Across all funds, this capital plan for 2026 totals approximately $76 million. Additionally, the budget outlines a five-year CIP plan based on a prioritization matrix. The intent of the CIP process is to allow staff to consistently compare projects across the city, create clear prior, clear criteria for prioritization and allow for a long-term documentation of decision-making. Simultaneously, it is important to understand the city's CIP program is a combination of restricted and unrestricted revenues, and those restricted restrictions inform funding decisions. Unrestricted revenue is found only in the general capital improvement fund. This unrestricted revenue includes sales and use tax, interest earnings and unrestricted reimbursements from the Westminster Economic Development Authority for costs incurred by the city. Restricted revenues may be used for specific purposes and therefore have less flexibility with allocating funds to projects. Just as important, the general fund is proposing to increase its transfer, as Chris mentioned, to the general, general capital improvement fund, our GCIF, increasing from 6.9 million in 2025 to 13.5 million in 2026. Furthermore, in the mindset of unturning every stone, departments identified 3.1 million in existing GCIF projects to reallocate towards new priorities in 2026. The CIP process enables staff to recommend funding projects that support core infrastructure, traffic and mobility enhancements, public safety and emergency systems, transit and transportation planning, downtown streetscape and infrastructure, facility maintenance and improvements. Here are a few highlights of projects specifically looking at streets and transportation. We're maintaining the 2025 level investments in roadway quality, including 9.1 million in arterial roads and 3 million for concrete replacements. For public safety, about $5 million. As City Manager Andrews mentioned, several of these are related to high-speed fiber optics so that we can, after we complete our traffic management system assessment, implement the recommendations by understanding what our system, what optics we have to know where we need to go to implement a smart traffic management system. Utilities, approximately $39 million, including 21 for water projects, 15 for wastewater and 3 million for storm drainage. Our investments in downtown Westminster include about 1.5 million for downtown Westminster streetscapes, landscapes and utility infrastructure, focusing in on the B6 landscaping and streetscape as well as the C6 north streetscape. Parks, recreation and library CIPs include $2 million in recreation improvements to improve safety and accessibility at our centers. As we highlight some of the projects, we must also acknowledge the city continues to face a funding gap for a long-term infrastructure repair and replacement. Requests for the capital, general capital improvement fund exceeded available resources, resulting in an unmet funding need of approximately $64 million. As a result of the gap, staff not only continue to explore opportunities to diversify revenues, but are also working diligently to plan and execute critical infrastructure projects with the resources we have available. Staff remain committed to partnering with city council and the community to address ongoing infrastructure needs and to ensure continued delivery of high-quality services. Before we move on to the next section, let's pause. A lot of information in the last eight slides. Any questions from council?
Councillor Hart, I'll let you go first if you have any questions. Councillor Asadi?
Not now.
Councillor Iron?
What is expected amount in the general fund at the end of 2026 based on all these projects?
Sorry, can you say that again?
What is expected amount left in the general fund at the end of 2026 with all these projects? What do we keep in there for a rainy day?
Councillor, at the end of 2026, we're projecting 28, 28.8 million in both reserves and available fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Councillor Duma?
I had a couple of questions. I remember it said that the budget, one of the numbers in there was 6% is fines. We had talked before about changing some of those like fee schedules and stuff like that. I imagine that's that bucket. Is that something we're looking at for this budget year and does that number reflect that or is that? And does that number reflect that, or is that conversation ongoing?
This number, counselor, this number reflects a change that the judge made previous this year with fines that fee controls. I'm not sure about other fines, information on other fines.
And the other area that we had talked about were fees, which probably may be a different bucket, but is this reflective of some changes that you're gonna make in fee schedules?
This is reflective of changes in several fees. However, I think we're committed to a wholesale review of all of our fees moving forward. They're in many locations across city code and administrative memos. And I would like to highlight the roadway improvement fee is one that we've continued to talk about. A change to the structure of the roadway fee is not included in the budget at this time, and staff will return with further information after some more engagement around the roadway improvement fee.
It would be nice to kind of know the delta between those and what it actually does in terms of dollars. I mean, you don't need that right now, but at some point. And the other question I had was around, like the, you had in there Station Five in Stanley Lake, extending the fiber, I understand the capability. I don't know what technology you're using right now, but I'm just curious if we see some sort of return on investment. If we're using like a third-party network today, you know, what does that look like in terms of, or is there really an ROI that's been evaluated when we look at extending our network out?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, member of the council. Counselor Demat, your question was, is there another technology for connect to the outside of fiber optics?
Well, so you had to know that we were extending fiber optics to Stanley Lake and Station Five. So I have to imagine we have some sort of connectivity there. So if we're extending our network out there, I don't know, do, are we using a third-party service today that we're paying for? And so I'm just wondering if this at some point gets offset that cost because we're, or at least recouping some of what we spent today on connectivity for those locations.
Yeah, so right now, we have, for example, we have, for those remote locations, we mostly do three-point radios.
Okay.
So as you know, it's very low bandwidth, pretty small pipe, and very vulnerable to weather, obstruction, whatever you name it. So that's why we want to run fiber there. We currently have a D-mark location at Lasworth and One Hundredth. So we would just be pulling that backbone all the way to the Ranger Station. And then we'll run laterals off of that backbone.
And I imagine that those radio then are municipal network radios already, so there's not really any necessarily offsetting costs.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Number two?
No questions on this.
I did ask this.
You did.
Okay. I tried to go first so I don't forget her. I don't have anything else, so I think you're good.
We wanna thank you for your review of the proposed budget and sharing your questions. In your packet is attachment A, which included thirty-six questions that were submitted in their responses. New this evening is attachment B, we received some additional questions, additional seventeen questions, so a total of fifty-three questions. We thank you for those clarifications, and staff provided a response to each of them. We wanna open it up to see if you have any follow-up questions, clarifying questions related to your questions and the responses.
I'm just gonna speak for myself. These came in sometime today. I have not looked at them, so I have no clue what's on there.
I haven't seen them either until now, so.
So you might give us just a second.
Absolutely, please take your time.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So on number thirty-four, I had asked a question regarding, so with Westminster's growing diversity, where in this budget are we making tangible investments in multilingual access, culturally inclusive programming, and equitable outreach? And the response talks about the language access plan and the higher power and talent pipeline. But specifically, my question was more about, what are the dollars specifically that we're investing on inclusivity, basically? And I'm particularly interested in the libraries and what we're doing there to expand the programming in libraries.
For the language access plan, there's currently fifty thousand budgeted in the central charges. As we've mentioned, departments also have some funds that they have within each of the department budgets. I would ask Director Otzelberger if he could speak more specifically to the library programs.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city councilors Eric Otzelberger, Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director. Counselor Azadi, I'm pleased to report we have a variety of programs, especially at Irving Street Library. We have Spanish-language Storytime, and we're continuing to enhance our youth and adult programs there within our programmatic budget. I want to give gratitude and thanks to our library manager, Amy Rota, who, Amy and her staff, reprioritized some resource to shore up our materials budget, both hard and digital. So we continue to expand our non-English-speaking collection in just kind of the base of what we have with the library, too. Also wanna give a little teaser. Our rec team is working with an individual that we're looking for for next year, some Spanish-language parenting workshops through, actually, our rec programs, too. So we're trying to instill this in the core of what we do, and I think maintaining a strong materials and programmatic budget will give us opportunities to enhance what we have.
When did the Spanish-language Storytime start?
It's been going on for a little bit now, and but actually, the individual that's working on it, we're enhancing the frequency of that. So I believe, I'd have to double-check with staff, but I think this is year two-ish.
So is the majority of the fifty K for the language access plan, is that mainly the signage?
It could be used for signage, translation services, whether that is, we have some pockets, this is my charades for a pocket translator, or if we are sending a document to get translated, so it can be used for a variety of purposes depending on the need of the department or the document.
So from a library standpoint, it sounds like we're just continuing what we've been doing, and we're adding a parenting workshop? Is that, or is there more happening in twenty-six?
Counselor, I'd say we're enhancing what we're doing. So the parenting workshop would be a net new item, but I think as far as materials and the amount of programs, we're enhancing that. So it isn't a new creation, but it's expanding what we're doing.
Expanding in terms of like frequency or?
Frequency, yeah, frequency and variety in the ways of materials and resources, and a lot of adult programming, too, with, you know, job hunting workshops and things like that. So we're, and the team's always looking for new opportunities as well. So I'm not here to say that there couldn't be a new offering in twenty-twenty-six, but I'm excited where they're taking things, and I think it's fair to say, it's, we're continuing to move in the right direction with enhancing what we have in those areas.
Do you have a dollar-figure increase? So what was the budget for what we're doing there, and what will it be in twenty-six?
In, I'd have to dive a little deeper into, you know, this budget was really maintaining what we have, but, you know, it was tens of thousands of dollars that the library team specifically repurposed through some efficiencies in utilizing our temporary staffing resources especially. We're fully staffed for the moment, and we're working hard to keep that. So I can't give you a percentage, but I'd say, it's fair to say, you know, tens of thousands of dollars.
And they're all bilingual, all the staff?
Not all the staff, but we have a fair number of staff that have other language skills.
Because that's one, so what I'm trying to get at is, one complaint that I hear often is, you know, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking people who their first, the frontline at the library, the first people they speak to, if they're not speaking Spanish, or if they can't, it's very difficult. It's lack of access, right? They get basically turned off and they go away, you know, or they walk away. Can we increase the, not just language access, but the feeling of inclusivity, that they're welcome, that, you know, that there's always gonna be a Spanish-speaking staff member, that the materials that they get will be, and the right, the proper translations, that sort of thing? And if we can tie numbers to it, so it's tangible for the community that, look, we did this, and now it's this because we're investing in it. You know, that would be the ideal.
Absolutely, and I know through the recently completed and city council adopted library master plan that Amy Rota led us through, that's one of the strategic items in there. I don't have data, but I have a really nice anecdote to share here, so.
Another anecdote.
The young, I try. The young woman who does the bilingual Storytime and the Spanish-language Storytime grew up coming to, her family would take her to Irving Street Library, and it's a really cool full circle where now she's there and for adults who only speak Spanish, she's a lifeline, to your point. And it's just really cool to see where, you know, this library she grew up coming to, she's providing this crucial link for those kind of services. So we'll continue to work on that.
As well, counselor, something that our team's also done over the last year, year and a half, is a secret shopper program to have residents who speak another language as a primary language go to city facilities and, one, check out the signage, and two, to interact with staff to see how those go. And they go along with a city staff member who waits in the wings and gets feedback on that program. And we've used that to bring new technologies and new training to folks at different facilities as well to include that feeling of inclusion when someone walks into a city facility. In addition to that, we're continuing to work on as many, as many opportunities as we can to recruit and retain more, more staff members who speak languages other than English and everything we can. So several years ago, we changed our, we changed our program for our exempt employees to continue to recruit employees that speak other languages. And we're continuing to look at that. What more can we do to make sure we have employees who can speak Spanish when someone walks in?
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I do have a question, and this is a new one, and I apologize, but it's been an area of my mind for our police. We had discussed sometime earlier this year about improving our technology, especially around speeding and possibly getting, I don't remember what it was called, but I think a van, or like a radar van thing. Is that included in this budget, or what other technology is included? Or I did see a line that says we're looking at technology for next year. Is that gonna be included for looking at things next year?
Thank you, counselor. Our chief of police, Norm Hubbard, is coming up, and it is both.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, Norm Hubbard, police chief. Counselor Carmine, making sure I got your question right here. Curious about the automated vehicle identification system, or Avis, which is the speed and red light cameras. So we are still looking at that. It is not in the budget for twenty-twenty-six because we don't need a budget for it, as research has shown. That is something that we will kind of pay as we go. And that program actually more or less funds itself through the violators, funding that program, and paying the, paying the third-party person that is, or third-party company that would do that. So we are still researching that. We are still looking forward to potentially implementing a speed camera out of the Avis system, the speed camera system moving forward. What we found from the other agencies is that the speed camera piece of that has a quicker return on investment, but is also cost-neutral as it relates to staff. What we are finding is that the red light cameras become staff-intensive to the point where we may had to add, potentially through the courts in either point-five or one point-oh municipal judge, as well as other court staff. Because what ends up happening is that the speed cameras take a photograph of the license plate and the vehicle, and so it goes to the registered owner, where the red light cameras take a photograph of the vehicle, the license plate, and the driver. And there's, how do I say this? There's no, there's no onus on the individual that has the registered vehicle that ends up getting summons into court to identify who that driver is. So if it's not the registered owner, they then create a, they now create court work, if you will, to go down and to fight that ticket. So it ends up being heavy staff time as far as that goes. We're looking, getting a long answer here for you, sorry, but the speed camera piece of that, we are still looking at that and hoping, if all goes as planned, we would look to implement that into twenty-twenty-six, but it would be cost-neutral as it relates to our budget.
Chief, can you also describe the current speed reader that you've got deployed?
Yes, so we also have a, we also have a speed trailer, a speed camera trailer. We're looking at getting another one of those. We're still trying to fully realize a return on investment on this one. We did purchase one of those this year, we have it deployed. It is a hot commodity, it's being deployed in a lot of neighborhoods, people are requesting it. But it allows us to gather data twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We usually try and put it in a location for at least seven days. Sometimes it's more depending on what the complaint is. But that camera tracks, it doesn't give tickets or anything like that, but it tracks speeding, the date, the time, the volume, traffic. And it collects basically every person that's going through there and the speed, and it helps us to work with traffic engineering to see, is this a problem or is this a perceived problem? One of the intersections or one of the areas that we recently had this deployed, it's a twenty-five mile per hour zone. We had almost ninety percent of the vehicles, and their average speed was twenty-three miles an hour, which tells us now, again, that's also advertising. You know, we're here, and has that piece of it, but for that speed study shows that it was not maybe as great of a need in that area. So we have that, and we're, that's moving around the city, and it's kind of based off of, I'll say, complaint volume as far as that goes. But traffic is in charge of that, and they're putting that out. So that's a piece where we were able to work with traffic engineering and understand that better, where the Avis system that I referenced earlier would be more of a stationary piece. The first piece of that would be identify speed corridors through the city with CDOT. We are currently underway with that, understanding where we would have identified speed corridors, where we could put that system.
That's a great update, thank you so much. It sounds like it's all positive news. Hopefully, we'll recognize ROI for that van soon, but awesome, thank you so much.
Counselor Demat?
I'm just curious of how noticeable is this trailer that, I mean, do we think that there's a potential that people, I mean, I imagine as they see it there, they know, but do you see any kind of change in the numbers from like day one to day two to day three? If you're saying it's ninety percent twenty-three miles per hour, I'd be curious to know, like, is that overall, or that ten percent was the first day, and then people realize it's there, because?
The number I'm giving you is overall, it's a great question. I don't have that specific answer off the top of my head. I think it's reasonable to assume that the first day, we probably see some higher numbers, where the last day, we see some probably lower numbers, but I don't have that factually to give you, but I think that's a reasonable assumption.
Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
So I'm trying to understand the utility fund debt for our water and our sewer. I see it on page sixty-nine and seventy. Are those the total at the bottom of seventy of all of them? Or are they added together there? That total utility fund debt is that the water, sewer, everything, forty-four hundred and seventy-five million? On 70? Or is what's on 69 in addition to that? Just the, one's water and one's wastewater?
Yeah, the 475 is inclusive of both.
That's inclusive wastewater and the sewer and the new water treatment plant and all that?
Correct.
475 million?
Correct.
So based on our water rates currently, how long would it take to pay that off? You know?
Let me clarify the answer to my question. One, that's the outstanding balance that we're projecting as of 2031 of the end of this year. Would be 275, $3 million remaining in the balance.
What about the 475 million at the bottom outstanding balance?
Yes, yes, that's what I remember correctly, that's the outstanding balance. So each debt line, which is the white row that goes across, has a payment timeline that we're tracking.
But I don't imagine 2030 is when it's going to be paid off.
That's correct, this is just the.
So do we know when it will be paid off? Would be, unless we have huge water rate increases?
Yes, we have a payment schedule for each of those.
And how long will it take?
The most recent debt, Larry, that we did for the water treatment plant was.
30 years last year, so 29 years. And also, Mr. Lindsay, the 475 is principal and interest payment, so the principal remaining on the debt would be 278 million. So I think that's important to know, thank you.
So if interest rates go down, can we refinance this at all?
Oh yes, our city has a long history of doing that, and we're hopeful that that could occur in the not-too-distant future. Yep, the longest debt remaining would be 29 years. We have some financial advisors that monitor rates for our city and our utility. It's a very common practice, and we'll be hopeful of doing that.
Okay, and so on page 66, I see the courthouse with interest is 58 million. How long do we have, how long are we paying that off? And what's all these, I don't understand this certificate of participation, it gets up to 95 million.
I believe the municipal court was financed over 20 years. I'm looking for which page councillor, could you let me know exactly where you're looking?
66.
Okay, thank you, beg your pardon.
So we've got the issue dates, we don't have a payoff date on those.
Yeah, I believe it was 20 years.
And both that and all the structure at the new downtown, 20 years or 30 years?
I believe that is just less than 10 years remaining, but I will say that we have a more comprehensive schedule with final maturity dates in the city's annual comprehensive financial report, and certainly could, you know, refer to that if we can pull that up maybe during one of the breaks, and we'll address the maturity of the court. But yeah, I believe that all of these issues are 20 years or less, with the exception of the drinking water facility.
I'd just piggyback, because if I remember right, I mean, those things where we had that brought to us and we approved those things, you usually tell us how many years it's going to be maximum.
Yeah, the city attorney would note that as well, that's a requirement of our charter, that all of that is disclosed and authorized, reviewed, and approved by the city council.
So what if we have lien years, and we have all this debt to pay? Where are we going to get the money?
Well, you saw in one of the earlier slides, I was really impressed to see that, you know, the total debt burden for the city, I think it was about 3%. You know, average household debt might be as much as 30% when you think of household mortgages, car loans and things like that.
Well, 54% of people can't even have half their money going to their housing. That's why I'm concerned about water, I'm concerned about utilities are really going up, more than inflation. Gas, electric. So I'm just wondering how long it's going to take to pay for this water system based on a 4% increase or 4.5% that Dave was suggesting, or councillor Demont?
Let me interject, because I worked in a bond house, and that isn't how it works. You took out the, we took out a debt for X amount, and we will pay it off in 20 years. Some things we're going to pay off in 30 years, just like a house mortgage. Some people do 15 years for a house mortgage, some of them do 30. Some of them, I don't know if these days they go beyond the 30, but then that's where all of your payment schedules start, and they know what they have to pay, and it's around 3% of what they get in. And so they know all the schedules, it isn't a matter of things change because the schedule is what you have to pay each year. It isn't something new each year, they know where it's at, and they plan for it.
Well, and the other thing that I would point out, because I mean, I know this is an important topic to the community, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the increases aren't necessarily the debt service we have. It's not that you're having to take more money for the debt service that we've already approved, it's the change in landscape, whether it's new regulations that we have to pay for, other capital improvements we have to pay for, and just the increase in cost of service.
Yes, sir, that's a great point, and one addition to make to that. So our city borrows on a fixed interest rate basis, and a fixed payment basis, just as in household borrowing, so it's very consistent, very predictable. And given the city's very strong financial planning and position, our city has the highest credit rating possible, and that's a real sign of our city's and utilities' ability to repay. So hence the very high credit rating by Standard and Poor's at Fitch. So we're very confident in that low debt burden, shorter term, and the strong demographics of Westminster.
And on that note, just because I think it's important to note with our credit rating, one of the things that you guys watch is the amount of debt we carry or are allowed to carry, correct? So like, as we plan this stuff out, you guys have always been mindful in conversations in my time as far as where we can use the debt and such. The reason I think that's important for me is I had a conversation with somebody who feels it's not ethical to borrow money, and I don't see how it's not, it's allowed to borrow it. But I mean, that's one of the things that you guys look at when you use our allowable levels of debt that we can use, and does that not play into what our credit rating is?
Oh yes, sir, it's not only watched by staff and the manager's office, of course, and our great financial leadership, but our, the city's creditors, you know, the investors that the mayor described and that come through the bond house. They look at that very, very carefully because before they'll make an investment of purchasing those bonds, they want to not only understand the ratings, but many other city activities, like for example, our cybersecurity investments that, you know, drives the city's ability to repay. So it's just, so all of those things are very important to, you know, the city's ability to repay and borrow at very low interest rates and, you know, have strategic planning for the future.
Well, I appreciate you explaining it, because I think that the work that that team does in order to not have to go for things like we're having to do with the tax increase for the things that we can't cover is super important. Because to me, we needed a municipal court, you figured out a way to do it, and same with the water plant. So I think it's important that people understand this, so I appreciate you clarifying all that.
And can I make one comment too? I think the point you made about 3% debt burden, it's really important to reemphasize that with all the things that we're paying for, a lot of borrowing that we've done, we only have 3%, 3% of everything.
Yeah, can we go back to the slide? It was earlier on the pie chart, I think it was just under 3, it was, you know, somewhere in there. And while Mr. Lindsay is very quickly looking at that, you can see that, you know, the general fund debt burden is 2.3%. So for every $100 that's brought in, $2.30 is needed to pay debt. And then Chris, if you could, Mr. Lindsay, if you could go back to, you know, sort of the all funds, you know, you can see there that the debt service cost to all funds of the city is 70, you know, excuse me, 7 cents of, or I can't even do that math now, it's getting so small.
That's just the post-bonds.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. But you can look at all of those, and you see that the debt burden's extremely low, gives us a lot of predictability, thank you for that, Mr. Lindsay.
Do you do scenario planning on, you know, interest rate fluctuations and what the refinancing could look like? Do you have like different projections?
Oh yeah, you know, we have an excellent financial team, both in our utility and in our policy and budget office that do that. But also, the creditors will check our work. I can tell you that Mr. Andrews himself is interviewed by Standard and Poor's and Fitch when we want to achieve ratings as high as we do. His testimony and the interview that he does a part of that is very, very important, as well as, you know, our entire finance team. So we do a sensitivity, best case, worst case, some of the things our city's experienced in the last 30 years with changes in the economy. So we're, we certainly do, and even in water consumption, you know, can vary from year to year. Excuse me, I get a little hoarse. And so we prepare for raining years, drier years, et cetera, that will also drive the ability to repay, and substantially it's driven by the low burden.
Councillor Hott, after hearing everything, do you have any other questions?
No, I just want to say that I got the opportunity to read over the questions that staff had answered right before council, and then listening to this. I'm just really impressed with your thoroughness, and I just want to thank you for all of your work in answering all of our questions.
Thank you. Next?
Oh, sorry. I wanted to talk about the event portion, because I brought up the alcohol. I don't know how my colleagues feel about cutting some of the ones that involve alcohol or figure out ways to not involve alcohol. Especially like the Easter one was totally about alcohol, it used to be about kids.
Councillor Demont, do you want to?
Because you said your colleagues, so I'm kind of in between the two. Like I think it's disappointing specifically with the Easter one, that the city doesn't really have its own thing that's more family-friendly. I know that event's super popular, I went to it multiple times, and I understand the concerns about, you know, over indulgence, you know, and society in general, and people who end up with addiction, so I'm sensitive to that. But, you know, we are a free society, and nobody's forcing people to go participate in those. But I do agree with my colleagues in terms of, one, some more family-friendly ones that we don't have to include, every little thing. Two, I think, I was helping the mayor track down some fully-letted Coke, as she likes to say, at the Westie Brew Fest, and you had to go like out of the way in the middle of the place to get it. And I think, you know, not just for the, some of those places aren't really like, the Easter one is not really family-friendly, so you wouldn't have, you know, maybe as many non-drinkers. But you are wanting to encourage people who maybe are there to drive their friends, so to make it a little bit more friendly for people who don't want to indulge in alcohol, but maybe want to participate in the activities. Like the Easter one is, you know, there's a lot of good activities there for adults, but, you know, I think we could probably hone in a little bit better on some options for people. Or like Mayor Pro Tem said, you know, being a part-time manager in the restaurant industry, I can tell you that non-alcoholic options is becoming like a more and more thing. Most of the alcohol providers now have some form of non-alcoholic beverage. So, you know, I think it's worth a conversation.
I was at CML, and just, you know, you just talked to everybody, and it was interesting. And so I think throwing it out to them and let them go back to their team and talk about it, just hear what we think, because after what we heard at the, what came back in, and this isn't new, because when I was started in '21, they had this every year, and these numbers just keep going up. And I know at one point, and I don't know if St. Anthony's still has it, but they had 1,800 people just for their facility that use AA facilities. And they allow AA to, at least they used to, to have their meetings there. And then I know many churches in our community that have AA, if not once or two to three times a week. So we know that, and that's good. But like for the beer fest, one of the communities said, and I don't think we have it, can't you go and, as long as you stand in the long lines? I don't know what it adds up to, how many you could really get in that amount of time. I'm always searching for water or a Coke, and it took two of you to find me a Coke this year. And, but they have a ticket, and you can only, you only get so many shots or tries or whatever that glass is. And each time you go someplace, you have it, but each area had also water because they were talking about, you know, we can't just have people drinking, and while there is food. So each booth had that, whether the city provided it, I didn't get to ask that question, because I know for us, you have some areas, but even when you have the area, because they just put on the, I didn't ask for which thing, the bracelet that they give you that shows you can drink, and I guess I was supposed to have some other bracelet color on to be able to get water or a Coke. But they had a ticket, and it's, you can only do so many punches. And I don't know how they figured that out, but I thought, well, that's interesting too, because that does limit how much people could get. So however much is in that, times 20, that's what they got. So, but I heard that from other communities, that they were, they use things in different ways. It's my kids that came to me, I don't know, it was towards the end of my last term, and they just said, as I left and they were getting the parks and rec thing and everything, between 13 and 17, they said, does Westminster do anything without alcohol anymore? And so it's from my own kids that realized, I don't really think about it because I don't drink, and it doesn't matter to me, but, and I still go. Will I go when I don't have to be there as an elective official? Probably not, because to pay to walk around, I don't, I can do that around the dog park or something. So it's just, when young people tell you that, and your own kids tell you that, I just think, how many things do we have for families? How many things are totally consumed and have a piece of alcohol? Or whatever, does it matter to me? Not really, do I hear complaints about it just from my kids? And people that try to get, I mean, I can remember Taste of Westminster at the Weston, I had to carry my own Coke. I just brought a big purse, and people go, where'd you get that? I said, I brought it from home. After two years of that, they finally had at least a basket with some water and 7-Up of Coke. So we just need, talk about diversity, let's talk about people drink different things.
And I'll just add, yeah, I would totally support this, councillor Ireland, because I also don't drink, and it's because I think we have an over-consumption right now that's happening, and families need a choice. Old people, talk to me, young people, workers, a lot of people are like, hey, no options, no water, no soda, you know, a lot of our events. I understand the revenue push, but I think there should be some more balance and more non-alcoholic options, just so everyone has a choice, can freely attend and feel included.
Councillor Demont?
One of the other things, because I mean, we have a big craft brew state. I mean, and I know part of it is, you know, economically, we want to help those businesses promote. I mean, so maybe that's one idea is, you know, there's plenty of different drink vendors that, or food trucks that you could get as different drink options to help them promote their businesses too. I actually have an employee who works for me as a developer. He and his wife have started a, trying to think, what are they called? The Trashy Lemonades or whatever they're called? Something, they bought a trailer, that was a horse trailer, and they turned it into lemonade stand, and they go do different things, much like we have at like Westie Fest and stuff. So it would be a good opportunity just to mix in some of those other ones, so you're still helping people promote their businesses, but having some different options.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, similarly, I was, you know, I do think our community's aging, so we don't have as many families kind of moving into the city as we do have, you know, as we look at the demographics and where we're going to be. So having a good balance of it's still adult-oriented events. And, you know, I love the diversity of events that we have, and, you know, I still feel like we can get, to your point, mocktail carts or craft. There's a lot of burgeoning, you know, industry that are either non-alcoholic or something to complement, and so that we have a diversity. Yeah, I would love that.
Councillor Ireland?
I appreciate all your feedback, just, you know, just so we're aware that alcohol does contribute to mental illness, and it is. contribute to mental illness. And it is twenty-six percent in this area are, out of a hundred thousand people die in alcohol-related deaths. So that's all my concern about drinking and promoting it as a city, and paying, the taxpayers paying for it as a city. So just throwing it out there, and you could think of your contributions to the thought process here.
I will accept all of this feedback, and we have a wonderful special event team, like you know. And I think tactically and operationally, we can work to effectuate some of these concepts. In, in the response to Counselor questions, there's a list, one of the questions was, what events are we planning for next year? More on the macro level, I want to make it clear, as we're, you know, in a lean budget, game of trade-offs, as we have to continue to up our game for safety and security and other expenses for some of our marquee events like Westie Fest and Fourth of July, we have made the decision, we are not planning on the Adult Egg Hunt for next year. So we're planning to discontinue that. We're on the fence. You know, when you look at what, what, what events primarily, not to pick on them, are more alcohol-fueled, it would be the Adult Egg Hunt, Top Taco, and Westie Brewfest. To Counselor Demat's standpoint, you know, there is an industry here, and I think through better offerings of alternative beverages, we can, we can try to accommodate the other two. Another thing I think we have an opportunity to do better at is with our friends in Highland Hills, and I don't know if council's aware, but as I've been working with my partners there, we, we acknowledge we can do more in partnership with events. So you mentioned Easter. They, and they're a strategic partner of ours. They do a family traditional egg hunt, and we were sort of in this non-compete with them. So I, but I think we could probably do, you know, up our game with marketing and just leveraging that partnership as well. But with this feedback, I just want you to know, one of the events, we've, we've heard concerns in the past, and, you know, from a dollars and cents standpoint, and from the feedback standpoint, we are not going to pursue that next year. And, you know, if, if council is amenable, we'll work to expand offerings and try to manage other, other events to have more offerings.
And I think we mentioned this, had this conversation last year with different things. This city has this event, then this city has the same event, but they're having it here. Same, same event, but somebody's having it here, and then we have it. Do we need five of the same kinds of events? Why not partner? And that way, you do get to know our encapsulating neighbors around, and it's still community. And I, when dollars and cents are tight, you can still have good times together, but use every penny wisely, and don't, you don't have to have your own just to have your own. It still can be community of a couple of cities getting together. And trade it off each year, which is, maybe at Broomfield one year, it's at Westminster the, next year, trade it off. But it just, to me, makes sense because of dollars and cents.
Can we look into that? Is that something, that's a great idea?
Absolutely. You know, as we go forward, I mean, the team always works well in advance, you know, with, with a lot of logistics and a lot of private, you know, private partners and, but having that mindset, and that's where I just mentioned Highland Hills, because the executive director and I have talked specifically as we, you know, are in the custom, you know, we're, as council knows, working towards a new IGA related to some facilities. But I think we have an opportunity to leverage, you know, you have an overlapping special district, and at least not compete, and maybe leverage our limited resources for special events, and look at those kind of opportunities with some of our, our neighbors as well.
I missed somebody's hand.
I want to double down on what you just said. I think that's a great idea for collaboration's sake. I think we've brought that up a few times, but thank you for that. I had a couple last-minute questions, and then I just wanted to highlight some of the key wins that I saw in the budget, just to call them out. But question around transit study, I believe that we approved that for happening next year. I just wanted to know if that's in here somewhere. I don't, I'm not entirely sure. But did council confirm that's happening, or is that still in thought process?
Are you sure you have a transportation and mobility plan, or a TMP, or?
It was for our own planning department, doing a transit study of just all the corridors and pedestrian access and speed bumps and everything. Pretty comprehensive. We'd had Chris Chobin in here to talk about it, and I wasn't sure if we, I don't remember if we totally approved it.
He did do it. He said it studied with Adams County.
It was coming.
Vision Zero with Adams County is coming.
Safety. I don't know what Jefferson County's doing. But we do have Adams County.
Yeah.
Coming down the bay.
Okay. It's up to you.
I'm trying to think of what Chris would have been in on. We have the funding for the design of the federal BRT.
Yes.
Project?
No, I mean, I know very much about that, so, yeah.
I think it was a safety study.
I think the TMP was delayed, because I asked about it. It was part of that three-point-one million.
It's number six on here.
Okay.
So, Counselor, the two things that are in the budget are the traffic signal assessment, intersection assessment this year. That's, that is in the budget. Other item?
System assessment.
System assessment, that's what I was referring to.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Paul Knippel, Director of Public Works and Utilities. I don't know if I'm going to be much help here, but there was a question about transportation management plan.
Yeah.
That was below the line on CIP. I don't know if it's related to that or not. That was, it was completed a couple of years back. It's got a list of projects to enhance transportation in the city. There's no more need to do further planning. That document will be updated at some time in the future. We'll just now take the projects that are in there and put those into our prioritization for projects.
Okay.
That's one thing.
Okay.
Another one, it's on page one-twenty, and the Community Services Planning Division Department's overview. This may be what you're referring to, Counselor, is that they're continuing implementing the Seventy-Second Avenue Study, the Federal Boulevard Multimodal Study, which includes micro transit services for the first and final mile connections.
Yes.
That is in sector for 2026.
Oh, good. Okay, yes, that's much closer to what I was, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry for all the confusion. There's a lot of transit studies. Okay, good. So I'm glad that we're doing that. That's, that's really good, because I think that that's what we were talking about, looking at the safety around a lot of the corridors in our community. So, fantastic. Well, thank you. And then, just going back, this, this was something small that we had talked about, but I don't think we ever did implement it, was doing an optional QR at our events. And this is for Parks, Rec, and Libraries, optional donations, and thank you, Paul. Yeah, and I think we just kind of swept that under the rug, and maybe we should, but we had all agreed that that could be a possible way to offset expenses, and council had approved it. So just wondering where that went.
Hello. At this point in time, it wasn't something we were looking to implement for this event season, but more with an eye toward 2026.
Okay. So it sounds like it's not a for-sure thing either way, or is it included? It's clearly not included in the budget. It looks like we're thinking about implementing it.
It's, well, it's, it's something we could evaluate. The devil's in the detail sometimes with finance and just clearing accounts and how, how those funds would be used. But it's something, you know, once again, with the team doing very far in advance planning, we can, we can take a hard look at it for 2026. I would give credit to our sponsorship team. Adam Ritter, who leads that, has been doing a marvelous job. So it varies with events, but this has been a better year for sponsorships, which provides more cost recovery. So we've just been focused on that effort, but we can take a closer look at it for 2026.
Even if you wanted to do one time, I would use the fireworks. I mean, it's totally free. People are there from ten in the morning until you like the last thing. And if you had those around it, all the different places, just that code and whatnot, it'd be an interesting experiment to see what happened.
I agree with that, with the turnout, you know. I think people want those kind of events. I think they want to be there, and I think they'd be willing to contribute.
On the same kind of idea, I was thinking as you were talking through the, back to the alcohol thing, maybe there's an opportunity for some education around that. I mean, it might seem bizarre to have it at a drinking thing, but having, like, one of our nonprofits, like Community Reach or something like that, that works with the substance abuse programs, that maybe you could have them participate and be able to have people donate to something like that at those as an educational piece. And, I mean, not everybody who drinks ends up, you know, in a situation, but it would be a good education opportunity and maybe something for those partners that do work in our community.
Absolutely.
All right. I don't think I have any more questions, but I just wanted to call out some wins that I saw due to a lot of the responses and answers that you provided, so thank you. But this budget includes expanding and enhancing Arts Week throughout the city, which is something I'm really excited about and have been, you know, kind of talking with Kate Cook all year about how we can make that happen. And from what I've seen in the budget, it looks like that's pretty budget-neutral. So that's really exciting. And so I want the community to be aware that we're doing everything we can to enhance the arts throughout the city, and I want to help promote that any way I can. I also saw that the capital improvement plan will have a GIS map in it for the final budget, and that's something I know we've all been pushing for, and I'm really excited about that, to take advantage of our GIS services. But visuals help folks understand what's happening in the city. And so thank you for all that effort, and I think it'll help all of us digest the, the content better. The budget also includes the Via Shuttle for next year again, which is really exciting, and that's due to the consumer numbers. And so that's really great, that so far we've proven that that shuttle is providing a necessary service for folks, because we pushed for it. We were not sure at the time whether or not it would have the, the drive and the usage, and it has. And so that's really great. And so thank you for providing that opportunity for residents, especially as seniors are going to need more and more access to transit throughout the city. It also includes, you know, the future IGA within Jeffco for the Homeless Initiative, which is really exciting, A, because it means we're finally taking a leadership position on homelessness, and we're doing it at a regional collaborative level. And it may possibly save us dollars, because the current plan, obviously, it hasn't been adopted, but it has Westminster contributing fewer dollars, because we're providing so much energy towards this effort. So that's really exciting. And then we just heard from our police chief that it also includes possibly Avis, it's not finished yet, but that's a budget-neutral way to help resolve our speeding issues, and so that's really exciting. And I saw there was a question in there for the food budget. I'm assuming that was probably Counselor Ireland. And so just thank you for that. I, I too had questions over our food budget, and I kept wondering if I should, you know, try to talk about this. But honestly, the dollars were lower than I expected, so I appreciated the answers on that. So that was interesting to see the numbers and say, okay, well, let's look for savings elsewhere. So that was encouraging, just so the community knows, those dollars are pretty low. And then overall, the budget also includes the fact that we just said it earlier. But while revenue is slower than we expected for 26, it is still growing. So I just think it's important to emphasize that. So there's just some important highlights I thought we should call out, because I know that I've encountered questions all over about many of these issues.
Counselor, if I could follow up on one item. So you mentioned the map, and I gotta give props to our Public Works and GIS team. So one, the 2025 budget includes the map that you mentioned that we're working on for the 2026 budget. However, the Westminster and the Works website on the city's webpage includes an active map with all the projects that are underway across departments, across funds, that's active. You can click on a project or an area to learn more about the project. So that is out there and it's live right now for folks that want to interact with that. It's also got project, progress on projects, and my personal favorite, the map with the snowplows.
That's really exciting. Thank you so much for that, and that's a big win. That's something we asked for last year. So thank you. Thanks for updating us.
Counselor Ireland?
Just two more things. So I would like, like, an update of the parking at the new downtown, because there's still frustrations down there, especially for seniors at JCPenney's. It's a paid parking lot. They've had tickets when they came out, getting a shirt or whatever. So I want to, I want us to look at it, if it's really important to have paid parking at our anchor down there, or if we can just have it free during the day, and of course, after the store closes, maybe paid parking. But also, the Sustainability Center, we've had some complaints about that, how that is going. We're on, we'll be going on our, what, third year, 2026. We have a lease of five years. What we're doing there to make the neighbors happy, and how much of that's costing, and are people really using it? What's our usage there? Are people, you know, is it continuing to increase people using it, or is it going down? I'd like to know about that.
Great. Thank you. Lindsay Kimble, Community Services Director, here to answer the question about the parking in downtown. The parking in, in all of the lots and the garages are free for the first four hours. So we do readily admit, I think we can do another big marketing push on that. We did one last year, and I think it's very timely to do that again, to help with the education of residents and visitors to our downtown. What is paid, though, is the on-street parking in certain areas, because we want to encourage a constant turnover of those spaces. Otherwise, what, what may happen, what, what we've seen happen in other downtowns, is that residents who maybe don't want to pay for a parking space in their building, or they have one and it's just more convenient to pull up along the street, they, they technically could park their car there for fourteen consecutive days and not move it. And then that retailer loses that spot right in front of their retail establishment. So to encourage that turnover and quick access to the retailers there in downtown and the restaurants, we do have that paid parking concept there. It's a, it's a dollar an hour, and we have places where you can pay, pay stations and apps to pay, and so there's multiple ways. But, you know, we definitely can do greater on the education. Also want to add that we do the first interaction, I would say, with, with parking enforcement is a, an educational piece. We try to look at it from that perspective. That's our, it's our opportunity to educate the public. So it's never a ticket. It's always, hey, did you know, if you didn't park on the street and just parked inside the lot, it would be free? And, you know, but if you do want to park on the street, here's how you do it. And just try to be more friendly. And, because we know, it's, especially in a, in a downtown urban area, you know, and it can be intimidating to people who aren't used to, you know, paying to park, or certain places where they're supposed to park. So...
Was the JCPenney lot free for four hours?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, now that they know that. Anyway.
Yeah, and, and, Counselor, please, if anyone feels they were cited incorrectly, we're happy to look at that. Really, our purpose, especially at this stage of life for our downtown, is really to be as welcoming as possible and to have an educational emphasis for folks visiting. So certainly, if your constituent would like to, you know, share that with, with the team, we can, we can take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
As far as the Sustainability Center, are you coming back with that, or?
Thank you. Happy to address that, Counselor Ireland. So I believe we had gone since late last year without any complaints from the neighbors until the most recent round of emails when the umbrella... until the most recent round of emails when the umbrella, the shade structure, I'm not sure what exactly happened with that. So our staff has been working to address that. The folks that work at the Sustainability Center, right, they, they work to reuse items. And so they wanted to do something quickly, to put up a structure to get that accomplished, but it didn't quite meet our expectations. So when our manager reached out, they pulled that, they pulled that down within the next day. And we're working with them on a more, more semi-permanent structure, right? Because we're not, we're not able to put anything out permanently. But where someone can sit in the shade, out of the elements, and guide folks into the right place.
So are the neighbors good with that? Have they seen the plan?
We don't completely have it fleshed out. We're looking at a couple of options right now. We did share one of, one of the things that we've looked at, a mobile structure with them. We're still working on what that will look like, but we will ask, ask the neighbors for feedback. The other question you asked about usage of the site, so that's something we're tracking monthly, both sustainability and city staff. And actually, we report on it through the transparency, through the transparency portal on the city's website. So it's a delicate balance, right? When there's too much traffic, right? That's when we get backups and the neighbors are concerned about it. So we have not had those backups recently. We've been moving folks through the site, and again, we haven't had complaints. But that's something we're working to keep an eye on.
Well, I hope it's getting used. That's the only, the balance, you know?
Yes, yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay.
There's a couple more. I know, we keep saying a couple more, and then keep coming back. For Chief Harbor and Director Kimball. So first, regarding our shopping centers, so business centers, I've asked a few times, I just want to make sure, I'll ask one more time, is there no need for additional police to patrol the shopping center? Because of the increase in crime?
Counselor Azadi, thanks for the question. As it relates to, as it relates to the shopping areas, we have not seen a significant increase in crime compared to the metro area. We are consistent with the metro area, what the state has seen as far as increase or decreases in crimes. We are steady with our neighboring jurisdictions. As it relates to staffing in and of itself, obviously with this year being a lean year, we looked inwards to see if there were other things that we could do as far as repurposing, reassigning people, as far as that stuff goes. So we are currently going through that assessment internally. But it's also one of those things where we looked at where we are at with staffing. So right now in the books, we are four officers short because we've had a few retirements here in the last few weeks, which is a good thing, gives us opportunity. But the, one of the issues that we have right now is we have several in training as well as several on medical leave, who are in various stages of medical leave. So didn't know that it was, didn't believe that it was appropriate at this point in time to ask for additional bodies when the bodies that I have aren't able bodies and out there as far as that stuff goes. But right now, I think we are, we are at a point with staffing where we have reassessed, we have reevaluated and repurposed some of those positions within the police department to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the community as well as the needs of the police department, to make sure that we're functioning properly. And with that, I think we are, we are at a good position right now where we are at. We will continue to reassess. One of the things that's in the budget, in the police department budget for 2026 is a, my words, probably not the proper IT words, but staffing software to make sure that our shift deployments, as it relates to call load, this would be a 365, 24/7 analysis to make sure that our staffing, our shift deployments, not only the numbers, but also the times when those are, when we're putting officers out as it relates to calls. And I think it's more, I think it's important for us to take a look at that first to make sure that we are using what we currently have appropriately and responsibly before I'm coming to you or to the city manager, asking for 10 to whatever that FTE count is. So I think right now we're in a good spot. A lot of it, as it relates to call load, is seasonal. We see an increase, obviously, in call load during the summer when windows are open, speeding complaints, all those types of things. Everything is magnified during the summer where we're heading into a, I'm going to say a quote unquote slower season as it relates to that. So we will continue to assess that, but I think for where we're at for today, I think we're in a good position.
And that's a good segue to the next question regarding speeding. So similarly, so we've heard about the tech potential, but from a people standpoint, is there anything, my question was going to be, is there anything we could do? Can we put like a visual deterrent? You know, just having a cop car on the road can deter, usually enough to make people slow down in the school zone and things like that. But as you know, we have a lot of speed, speeding that's happening. And not even talking about the racing, there's racing, which I know there's a regional task force and all of that. But from a speeding standpoint, it's getting out of control. It sounds like you're saying you're reassessing and reevaluating. There's potential that there's capacity, capacity that you can find to then maybe reassign to more speeding, right?
Yes, and the other thing that we did this year, so we had difficulty, we had in the 2025 budget, we have five FTEs that are civilian or professional staff accident investigators. We had difficulty in filling that fifth position. We had posted it a few times, couldn't get, couldn't get it filled with the people that we wanted. And so one of the requests for the 2026 budget is to reclassify that accident investigator back to a police officer position. More than likely, that police officer position, once it's filled, will go back into that traffic unit. So again, we're, we're adhering to the, to the lean requests and making sure that we are doing things responsibly within the organization and taking that position, repurposing it because we couldn't, it wasn't a position that we could fill. Several years back, as many remember, we had difficulties filling the police officer ranks. So we took one of those positions and, and made that into an accident investigator. Well, now the, can the shoe's on the other foot? And so we believe that we're going to have a better opportunity to fill that position with a sworn body. Now, that sworn position can still take accidents, but then they can go out and do enforcement as well where some of those accident investigators can't.
You could just have empty cop cars too, just leave them empty. It still, it still works.
It works until, until things end up on those cars and they realize that.
Speeding doesn't go down in the winter. Come to my house at 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, and turnpike, Westminster Boulevard, 112th, 104th, and Sheridan. It can be any of those pieces, and I put it all down when I go to street racing. And I haven't done it for a couple of months just because I'm tired of reporting it. But I will get back to my normal stuffs and so that they get it because I tell people if they don't know it, they can't do anything about it. And I've been the worst this last two months of not reporting it. But no, it's year-round.
It is.
It is year-round. And you're welcome to sit in my driveway anytime and have windows down and listen at any hour of the night. I won't report anybody.
And final question. So to reiterate for anyone watching, I think it's important to note that there were a lot of questions, like you guys mentioned in the beginning, that we all sent in questions, and a lot of our questions were answered. In case the public's not seeing us asking a lot of questions here, it's because a lot of it was asked beforehand. And one of them, I think, is important to say out loud, Chris, if you would indulge me, for the cost of living question. So it's really important, Counsel Ireland, and I agree on this. It's very important to the community, cost of living is getting out of control. My question was, cost of living drivers aren't being systematically addressed in this budget. What are the programmatic ties to cost of living relief in areas that matter most to families, including utilities, housing, childcare, transportation? If you can just read the answer you gave, just so the community knows that this was a priority and we're doing something?
Thank you, Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Counselor Azadi. So the staff, staff response there was, while Adams and Jefferson County serve as the primary providers of essential services for families, the city remains a partner in supporting cost of living relief. Below are several initiatives the city is providing to help ease financial pressures for residents. The first is the Utility Billing Assistance Program. The city continues to prioritize support for residents struggling to pay their utility bills by offering targeted financial assistance based on income eligibility. The program has gone from, grown from 2024 to 2025, reflecting increased community need and outreach. In 2024, there were 458 participants enrolled in the bill credit program, and currently 480 customers are receiving a $25 monthly bill credit when an additional 175 enrollees anticipated in 2025. The city's hardship program utilization has also seen growth. By early September 2025, the program had distributed a total of $7,934 in aid to 15 approved applicants, whereas in 2024, 12 participants received $4,886 in assistance. Two more applications are nearing approval, and one additional applicant is in the process of completing paperwork. Each applicant is expected to receive approximately $600 to $700 in assistance. Additional programs available to our income qualifying households include the Leak Repair Program, which can provide up to $3,000 in indoor water repairs for income qualified homeowners. The Toilet Replacement Program provides up to two new toilets, showerheads, sink aerators, LED light bulbs, and other efficiency items at no charge. This includes that all bill credit customers are automatically eligible and do not need to apply. And a list of eligible customers is sent to the Ma'auha Youth Corps each month. Additionally, there's the Garden in a Box Program. There are a number of $100 discounts each year related there. Please go to the city's website to find additional information about the Water Bill Assistance Program as well as other programs. In addition, in the realm of transportation, the Via Mobility Service began on July 1, 2025 with a budgeted, a budget of $190,000. During July and August of 2025, approximately $32,000 was spent for 313 individual trips to Westminster senior residents. Based on the early ridership trend, staff included a funding request in the 2026 proposed budget to ensure the continuation of this service. In childcare, in December 2021, a municipal, the municipal code was amended to remove the limit on the number of children at childcare programs operated out of residential homes in Westminster, and changes to zoning or ODPs are not required. These programs are regularly reviewed and approved through the city clerk's business license process. Staff partnered with Colorado Small Business Development Center to offer a free six-week course titled Fundamentals for Childcare Businesses. Staff met with Althea Gomez, CEO of Executives Partnering to Invest in Children, and are working to coordinate a community leaders workshop series to define key challenges and priorities, identify innovative solutions and funding opportunities, explore clear action and investment plans, and commit to next steps and launch initiatives. Staff is investigating various options to assist childcare operators, such as a potential tax credit and updates that may be possible for the development process and zoning, as well as evaluating real estate options. Maker Housing Partners is in the process of building a 70-unit affordable multifamily housing development consisting of 48 single-bedroom units and 22 two-bedroom. The project's commercial space is reserved for a future Adams County Head Start Educational Program for children ages three to five years. This amounts to an expected four new classrooms servicing approximately 64 students. The property will also feature a 4,000-square-foot playground for use by Head Start and can be used by residents after hours. To support the development of this childcare, the city has signed this year's private activity bonds. In rental housing, the city is prioritizing additional training opportunities and introducing a cross-training initiative for existing staff supporting the code enforcement and rental housing inspection programs. This approach will increase customer service, broaden internal expertise, foster operational flexibility, and ensure consistent service delivery without adding new staff. Cross-training existing code enforcement officers, repurposing an existing full-time position and an existing part-time position creates 6.5 additional full-time equivalent to support the rental housing program. New staff are currently being trained in the field to perform rental housing inspections, and existing staff are being provided additional training and resources to be more effective and efficient in the field. These improvements increase the total number of staff members able to support the rental housing program from three to 9.5 FTE. The Human Services Board recommended $130,000 in funding recommendations to the city council to support the mission of aiding in food, health, mental health, and shelter services to Westminster residents. Details about those recommendations begins on page 150 of the proposed 2026 budget document. And lastly, we linked to resources from both Adams County Human Services Department and Jefferson County Human Services Department.
Thank you, sorry to have you read the whole thing, but it's important for the community, and thank you to all of staff that worked on all those things.
Are these attachments being put on the website so people know? Thanks. Counselor, Mayor Putnam?
Just had a quick follow-up question to one of my questions regarding the neighborhood calming, traffic calming efforts. I know that we have, I can't remember the budget we have, it's maybe 150 or something around there. But we have a lot of community requests, budget requests around traffic calming. And the answer is kind of like, we'll check it, and you know, but my, you know, Counselor Azadi highlighted it, you know, and we've all mentioned this over the years and said that the speeding, especially in neighborhoods, is just disconcerting for people. And do we, are we putting enough aside in traffic calming to address the need in the community at the same time? Do we have the capacity, if we did put more money aside, to address more, given the staff that we have?
A little bit of both. We take, if we get a call for an issue, we'll go, our traffic engineer, Mary Hammond, will go out there and look at it and maybe coordinate with PD to see if it's an enforcement or something we need to do with the streets. So we just sort of evaluate it. But if it's something that we need to look at from a roadway perspective, we investigate it, we put it on our list, so we're keeping track of it. And this, what's in the '26 budget is money, is fund that will go toward engineering consultants to help us evaluate all of these things and see what best course of action would be, and then give some high-level cost estimates that then we can build into the program later or for subsequent years. So we have a lot of needs, and if there's, if it's something simple that we can go do, then obvious, and doesn't cost a lot of money, we'll go do that. But many of these are a little more complicated than that. There's side effects, we just need to review them and look at them. So that's what this money in the 20, in '26 is proposed for, is to give us some design and engineering capacity upfront, look at projects and then get good costs with them, and then subsequent years, we'll go fund them and build them.
In our neighborhood, when the police staged for a day or two, it wasn't anybody outside the neighborhood that was speeding.
Yeah, that's usually.
It is inside, so I then have caution of why should the city be spending when it's the decision-making of its own community to speed when they know there's kids there? I'd say, set up a police officer every day to give them all tickets. Then let them pay for a calming speed thing.
Well.
It's not outsiders doing it.
Yeah, no, I remember we had, Arvada, we had the neighborhood in Arvada, and they were concerned. It was our downtown Westminster traffic being, you know, causing their speeding, and it was mostly their residents in the neighborhood. So it's, yeah, I, okay, it's just, it's, it's, it would be helpful to be able to distinguish what we can do in a more immediate sense and have some budget set aside for those types of things that's clear in the budget, that we can do some smaller scale things and that we have a small budget for that in addition to doing the design work and waiting for it to get on the list, which seems vague or, you know? But I like your answer that there's, there's both happening.
It is, we're not, they're not, they're not falling off the table. We're keeping them in a bundle and looking at them systematically. But to your point, if they're. But to your point, if there are smaller things that we, so many of them we may be addressing in our, in the operations budget as opposed to capital budget. So I think visibility into that, and we can provide some view into that, what we have going on right now.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilor Demott?
Just one quick thing. Now, I'll admit, I think there's only one question in these additional questions that are mine, but we had a resident email and asked that if councilors ask questions when you post this in the budget, that they could know what councillor asked. They felt that that would be helpful. I think mine you could see because it was an email to me was the answer, but with that being said, the other thing I would say, so this is the eighth time I've went through this, and I didn't have a lot of questions just because of the process that we go through now. I mean, I feel like I really understood and knew this budget because of how you brought council in early on, which we asked for in the past. Additionally, you brought the community in early on, so I didn't have as many questions just because of our process compared to years past, but I do think that's a reasonable ask from the community member to see who's asking what.
And I see we still have a few slides.
Mayor, can we check in with council on Councilor Demott's request so that staff is clear if we're adding councillor names to the questions that are asked, whether councils, as a body, is good with that?
I'm fine with it. I think I asked most questions.
I challenged you, I have a lot, I have a lot in there.
The two people asked all the questions, so they're, it's okay.
People will find out how annoying I am with my comments.
I don't hear anybody saying no.
Okay, I just wanted to check that. Thank you. All right, Karen.
Thanks, Joey.
For transparency.
For questions to be.
So thank you very much for the conversation. As part of the 2026 budget, community inputs is very important to that process. We had a formal community request form available online from April 3 to June 2, and during that time, we received 58 unique requests. Staff researched each and provided a recommendation or a response. Focus areas included traffic calming, which we've spoken about this evening, as well as recreation, parks, streets, open space, storm drains and sewers, quiet zones, and community events. All of the responses and the questions begin on page 220 within the budget book. You'll notice that there's no particular order in which the questions are listed. Staff did not change how the questions were submitted unless there was personal information within the question, so we focused on the response, not necessarily rewording or wordsmithing the questions. And we will also, if the submitter of the question provided their email address, we will send an email once we've completed this process and share with them so they can find the responses to all of their questions and ask additional questions if needed. We wanted to see if there are any additional questions about the community requests.
Counselor Hutt?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you. I don't see any hands going up, so.
So we started this in 2025 as part of that budget process. And as an attempt, as an accountability loop and for transparency, we added a new section to the budget book, which is an update of the 2025 community requests, which we received 66 unique requests. So beginning on page 240 in the budget book, you'll see all of the questions that we responded to in the 2025 budget, and then you'll find a status update of each of those, of what has been done, what is in the process. You'll notice that 60% of the requests have been complete or no action is needed beyond the initial recommendation, and the remaining 40% are currently in progress. We will do the same thing for the 2026. We want to make sure that we are transparent and accountable to the community of the requests that they share with us, that we are circling back with them. City Council's budget. The proposed 2026 for City Council is $371,150. This is a 2% or $7,450 reduction. The proposed budget was developed using the same lean methodology applied to other departments and reflects adjustments made based upon actual expenditures. Should also be noted that the proposed City Council budget still includes the even-year increases for mayor and city councillor salaries and maintains the 27 sponsorships totaling $57,700, along with the $5,000 in contingency. City Council's budget details can be found on page 90 within the budget book. Any questions? Bless you. We want to thank you for your time, not only tonight, but through this entire process. Your feedback has guided our connections and engagement with you and with the community. And we hope you found this presentation and discussion useful and beneficial and valuable. So we've answered questions throughout, throughout our time together, and the rest of the time, we want to open the floor for any discussions of potential changes to the budget based upon earlier discussions. Please keep in mind that the budget must stay balanced, so if any increase in one area be a corresponding decrease in another or vice versa. To initiate a budget amendment, a councillor may propose a change, consult with staff to identify potential funding sources, or suggest offsetting adjustments. For the amendment to proceed, it must be sponsored by one councillor and seconded by another. Given the focus of tonight is budget, we've got some time to discuss depending on the feedback that we receive. So there's the potential of, we will receive your feedback, we may take a 10, 15-minute pause, if necessary, for staff to discuss, and then present those recommendations to you this evening so that we can finalize the 2026 budget in preparation for adoption. So with that, we open it up to any additional feedback, questions, potential adjustments that interest City Council.
Counselor Harland?
I know that you answered this question somewhat about the pay increase for all employees. Was it 1.5, 1.2? I don't remember, something like that, right? Have we looked at cities beside us compared apples-to-apples positions and how much they're making? Do we ever do that?
HR Director Davy Godfrey.
And as Director Godfrey comes up, I'm sure that is yes. So we've just completed a comprehensive study, which is the first of its kind in many, many years, so Davy Godfrey will describe that. And we also do check on an annual basis what our peer cities are doing with respect to cost of living increases, which I believe is the reference that you gave, which is a 1.2% cost of living increase this year for our employee community.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Mayor Potem, councillors, and Counselor Harland, to your questions, like Jody said, we're wrapping up, for the first time in over 20 years, a comprehensive compensation classification study. The consultant looked at over 20 of our peer organizations and found that to be able to keep pace, we need to, to be able to remain on task with 1.2% is going to keep us there. 50th percentile, be about middle of the pack. And so we're confident that this move is what we need to do to, so we don't fall behind.
Who do we compare ourselves to, do you know?
Oh, gosh. The primary nine that we've been looking at for years, cities like Boulder, Broomfield, Denver, Thornton, and Fort Collins, Lakewood. We, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head some of the rest of them, but this time, we did it more broadly, more comprehensive. We looked at all across the Denver metro, including special districts for some of our special comparisons, like in public works, park recreation, libraries, that sort of thing. And we're confident that we got really good data. The consultant is finalizing the study as we speak, so over the next month or so, we should have that finalized. But we're confident that this move we're making is both budget-conscious, it keeps with our lean principles, and it also is going to be a good move for the employees so that we can keep pace with our peers.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So for me, I don't have any adjustments. Maybe, because I think there are three areas that we need to actually wait on. One is childcare, I know that's coming to us soon. So in our strategic plan, looking at access quality and cost, there might be some things in there that may require funding, but I think that's a 2027 budget discussion. There's the speeding that we talked about, we don't need any more police officers. I hesitate because we, I would still like to do something there to see if we can, but it's not a hill I would die on, so I'll trust you, chief, that we don't need any more right now to, for the speeding. And the third was something I completely forgot. That was right there. I'll get it back.
I don't have an ad, but one thing that I'm curious is, and this is another conversation that's been in the community for some time, when people try to compare us to other cities and compare the organization to the growth of the number of citizens, I know oftentimes that some of those ads are regulatory or they might be service-based, but it would be nice if we, you know, kind of had a good way of tracking that moving forward. I don't know if we necessarily looked at that backwards, but that question has come up multiple times in my tenure, and I understand all those things and why that doesn't always equal that. But there may be an opportunity just for transparency for the future for us to kind of track that, so that when we do grow, you know, in five years from now, we can say, oh, here's a chart of what caused that growth in terms of full-time employees for the city.
Counselor Demott, we can absolutely track that, and I would say we do internally keep track of what staff members were added when. I would also draw your attention back to several years ago, when Deputy City Manager Dorr completed a fairly intensive comparison of the city in a number of areas against four other communities, Pueblo, Northland, Thornton, and another community. And I think, I would say, my takeaway from that was that it's, you're right, it's really difficult to show an apples-to-apples comparison because of a whole host of different service levels and requirements and expectations of each individual community. But I think, I think what I saw with that was that we were competitive.
Yeah, I 100% agree, but, you know, my thought comes out of one, just from the conversation, but two, I think about all the education that we've done around our Fire and Street Initiative, and, you know, we have all this data, and to have some sort of FAQ on our website that even shows some of those comparisons that we've done through these, I think they're relevant conversations, but they also are a good opportunity for people to understand how their government here in Westminster is structured. I think I shared before, my cousin was the city councilman, Wheatridge, and he and I had a heated argument that he just didn't believe we didn't use property tax for our fire service, and that we had to have a special district or there's no way it worked. I literally had to pull up our budget and show it to him because, you know, that is how Wheatridge does it and most of the other municipalities or special districts do, you know, so it would be good to just have that information up on our website in my mind, along with, you know, some of our city-sized demographics as well, just kind of how that organization has advanced over time, so, because I think it's good for people to understand, you know, why we do some of the work that we do.
I appreciate that, and I think what you said that really struck me, we did, we made a really good effort in Fire and Streets to make those connections, but I think we can do that in a number of our other service areas. So let's, let us work on that.
Yep.
Counselor Azadi?
So that was my third question, fire infrastructure. Again, I think that's a 2027 budget thing, because if the ballot question doesn't pass, I've asked this a few times, what can we do without CIP? I think there could be some reshuffling that we can do to shift more money to build those stations. But all those budget talks, I think we need to wait until after the ballot, if it passes or not, but I think that's really important to keep in mind, that it's not in this budget that we talk about it, it's, let's see what happens with the question first.
Just follow up to that, because I have that conversation every time I talk about this with constituents. Reality that, you know, just since you brought it up, if people are listening, reality is likely that we're going to have to look at what services we're going to cut in order to carry those critical services, in my mind. You know, whatever council sits here next year, if that does not pass, it's likely going to have to have that kind of conversation, so I think it's a good point for you to bring up so people understand the weight of their decision this November.
Truth. Counselor Hutt, anything?
No, I don't have any changes for the budget. I think it's really well done. Thanks.
I think you passed. Move on to 19.
Next step.
Back where we are.
Thank you again for the positive feedback. Next steps. So we will be returning on October 13 for first reading of the budget for 2026, as well as including the amendments for 2025. And then from there, October 27 will be our anticipated second reading of the 2026 budget to adopt. In early November, we will be having our full circle moment of receiving feedback and then beginning planning for 2027, and then start that process, as well as, once the budget is adopted, staff will continue to prep and be ready for January 1 to put this budget into action. But we wouldn't be at this point without your collaboration and your feedback and partnership, and we really appreciate it.
On behalf of the entire council, this has been such a breath of fresh air this year. We hit it running. It seems like we've dealt with it every month, and we probably have, if not twice a month. You listen to our feedback during our times together, where what works, what doesn't work, and, you know, I couldn't think of questions a lot of times as I saw other people's just because you have been so thorough, and you have listened, and you bring up the questions, you have the conversation back here. So tonight, it's just going back over what's happening, what you've done, how all of you, I mean, this is not just us, this is everybody in this room and probably missing another 30 people, but to all of you in this room that I know may be sick and tired of the budget and maybe go, this council is just nuts, we don't deal with it every day. And so the way we have done it in the past, and it just, this is, this is our value statement to the community, all of us, this is our value statement, and it is critical that we all feel good about it, we can all talk about it, and we know how it came together. And you all make that happen in a 101 language so anybody can understand it. I can't imagine the hours you've put in. I know what we've put in on our end, it's nothing compared to what you all and your staff and your team, teams within the teams put together. You look realistic at what's coming, and we know what world we're living in right now, and things are tight, but you have, we're too tight in an area with our 911. We hear that, we've heard that. We lost a key person, and we need two people sitting there. We get that, and so being bold to say, even though we're in tight times and you're squeezing everything you can, you had to come to us and say... everything you can, you had to come to us and say, we have, we need this and we need this. And I applaud you for that because you had, your reasons, there's nothing to quibble about. They're factual, they're key, um, that's that. And so, thank you, Jody, for everything for this entire team and I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening. I hope you don't have to stick, or you don't stick around because we have the executive session. So, um, have a great evening and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, thank you. Chris, thank you.
We'll take a break before we, or no, you want to close the meeting first?
If I could. Mayor, before adjourning the open portion of tonight's study session, um, if I could just ask if there could be a motion, um, to allow for Councillor Hutt to participate in the executive session remotely pursuant to the code.
Second. Remove the segment to allow Councillor Hutt to be in the executive sessions remotely. Are there any noes? She's in.
Thank you. And Mayor, there are two executive sessions proposed for City Council tonight. Uh, the first is to consult with the city attorney on legal issues involved in the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, Colorado Revised Statute 2410-101 at SEC pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C8 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B.
I'll ask you to give your name and that you're willing to go into executive session and we'll keep things confidential.
Obi Zadiez?
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
David Ma, yes.
Sarah Nermalo, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. Councillor Hutt?
Councillor Hutt, yes. Or Amber Hutt, yes, sorry.
Thank you. And there's a second executive session proposed tonight, um, which would be to consult with the city attorney on legal issues involving Colorado Sunshine and Open Meetings Law, which is codified at Colorado Revised Statute 246401 at SEC. Uh, and this could be convened pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C8 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B.
Obi Zadiez?
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
David Ma, yes.
Sarah Nermalo, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. Councillor Hutt?
Amber Hutt, yes.
Thank you.
And before we close this meeting, I forgot to ask all of you, we know we have 3H coming up for resolution or that a possible resolution we could do in October and we also know that Adams 12 is having a mill levy. Can we have staff at least getting those two resolutions together? They have, the counties have not put out, like if Highland Hills is or any of the other school districts yet, but can they at least get a head start on two of those resolutions to bring to council? For looking at? Okay. Is that all you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then it is 8:57, I close the study session part and we need a break. Councillor Hutt, please, um, go to the second link that I sent you. It should be at the top of your inbox. Thank you.
Oh, okay.